Good evening, I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town Council Workshop of June 6, 2023. I'll start with roll call. Counselor Chapel.
Present.
Counselor Maguire.
Present.
Counselor Meany.
Present.
And I am Counselor Carter, and with me on my right is Town Manager Nate Rudy. I'm looking for a motion for the council to enter into executive session under MRS Title 1, Chapter 13, Section 405 dot six dot A to discuss personnel matters, basically the volunteer ward selection.
So moved.
Second.
Krista?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Marty?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, and we'll enter executive session at 6:00 PM, and then we'll be back
We'd like to welcome everyone back to the Town Council Workshop of June 6, 2023. The council has left executive session at 6:33 PM. And we have made our selections, which will be announced at our Gray Community Day event on June 24th. The second part of our workshop is a discussion on the Staff Review Committee. And Dan, this was your item that you wanted us to talk a little bit about?
Currently, the Staff Review Committee is made up out of the Town Planner, the CEO, the Chair of the Planning Board. And I feel like I'm leaving somebody off. But I might not be.
No, that sounds actually right. Doug's not on there?
Doug is, yeah.
Okay, so the Director.
The Director and the CEO.
Okay, so the Town Planner and the Director.
Yeah.
And then the CEO and the Chair. Okay.
Well, the Town Planner, the CEO, and the Chair, those are the three.
Okay, so... Kristin, not Doug.
I believe it's Doug and... I don't know, actually.
Yeah.
I think they might actually, yeah. They might actually switch off, depending on the circumstances, to be honest with you. But as a member of the Planning Department, the CEO is always there.
So there's one. Okay.
As we go further along in clarifying and codifying the zone changes and get better about our ordinances, as I think we have, the goal is to streamline the planning process. And so what this committee does is basically allow for a fast track rather than going through Planning Board. Now, our Planning Board only meets once a month. So if you think about this from a developer's standpoint, you really are gonna... It takes a long time for that process to work. I'd love someday for the Planning Board to meet twice a month. But, you know, right now, we don't have a full board. And the people that we have are doing good work for the town. So as we shift more things onto Staff Review Committee, I think, given the impact and the responsibility for the comp plan, our understanding of what's sort of going to Planning Board and not going to Planning Board and how that process works, I think it makes sense for there to be a council liaison to that committee. They don't have to be a voting member. But I think it's an important enough group that's tied in with a lot of other things that... What I could envision is that we just wouldn't learn perhaps as much as we might or as quickly as we might what the gaps were or the conflicts were or the roadblocks were. And so I just think it would be valuable to...
Have a liaison?
Have a liaison.
And right now, how do... Where is it defined, what goes to them?
I know, I was just trying to find it on the website.
It's not on our... Well, they're not a council committee. So the Planning Board is, but the Staff Review Committee isn't.
Yeah.
And I know there was at one time some conversation about adding... What was it? It was commercial... And we ended up not doing it. I think Kathy actually brought it to us before she left.
I'm trying to think of some of the recent...
And it was, well, it was like a... She wanted to move this to Staff Review, but it was still with the Planning Board. And it was if a developer came to the Planning Board, it got approval for a commercial subdivision. And then, once that plan was approved, individually, businesses came to buy a piece of that subdivision or a lot that instead of having them have to go back to the Planning Board, it would go to Staff Review. And it never went anywhere because the Planning Board was like, well, we've never done those. We've never had a successful commercial subdivision approved. We had one preliminarily approved down at TMA, but it never went any further.
It does happen with residential subdivisions, too.
Okay, so if you could... You don't... Do you have an example where it is going to Staff Review? I know Kristin's on, but I don't know if she has one off the top of her head. So I guess I... It would help, I think, better understand if we knew what was being directed to them versus the Planning Board and how that will change over time.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I just, in my Googling on our website, it looks like probably the most recent one was a review of the medical facility, the urgent care that wanted to open on the Turpide Digger.
So maybe like a change of use?
Change of use.
Change of use.
Yep. Why can't I get on there?
My guess is it's things that are more straightforward.
Yeah.
Review of subdivisions and print things.
It's stuff that's much more clearly delineated. So, you know, where we give the Planning Board some leeway with regards, say, to buffering or setbacks or those kinds of decisions, there isn't a lot of clarity around or a lot of specifics around what we're trying to do. So, actually...
There's Doug.
There's Doug. Here's Doug.
Marty had a question.
Now, you say change of use. It was used as a physical therapy office, and now it's a urgent care. Isn't that basically the same thing, like medical?
We're contemplating, Doug, what types of items are referred to the Staff Review Committee versus Planning Board?
And Council Maguire is having a brain freeze.
It's suffocation time. 402-10-4?
Doug Webster, Planning Director.
Yeah, you're live.
Okay, thank you. The beginning of Article 10, site plan establishes... The first portion establishes what needs site plan. And then it breaks it out into minor versus major. And we added a catch-all after the last minor threshold, minor Staff Review Committee. And anything that is not mentioned defaults to Planning Board. The only other relevant administrative point is that an appeal of a Staff Review Committee goes to Planning Board rather than ZBA. Because the stat we... The thinking was at the time, I was here when it was crafted, the thinking at the time was that the Planning Board is more attuned to site plan practices arguably than the CBA.
Are there minutes of the site plan review?
I can't answer that definitively. Kristin spearheads it.
She says yes. Thank you, Kristin.
So my only other questions then, Dan, would be I'm presuming that most of the time the Staff Review Committee meets during the day, during the business day?
Usually prior to the Planning Board meeting.
Okay.
So it's like we do a workshop at five or six.
Okay.
They do the same.
So that would be my only question is if you guys decide to add a liaison?
It could be the Planning Board liaison.
Yeah, right.
I mean, it could just be, yeah. Which would make some sense.
I think that would make the most sense, especially if the meetings are happening directly prior to Planning Board meetings.
So we're just talking about adding a council liaison to the Staff Review Committee?
A non-voting.
Non-voting, non-involved, just kind of a way for the council to be plugged into the type of issues that might be coming up or that kind of thing.
Anyone's able to attend.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, yeah, just sort of from... You missed the beginning part of the conversation. But no, that's all right. Just the idea that as we move forward and we become clearer and more precise perhaps of the ordinances in our zoning, the goal of moving more things to Staff Review to speed the development process up would create, you know, possibly a bit of a black hole for the council as far as understanding the whole process for development in town with regards to how that's impacted by the comp plan and everything else. So I just thought it would be good to loop that in.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
If you want... Oh, go ahead.
If, just really quick point of information. I believe that the prior planner, and I'm quite sure the current planner, ensures that there is an update to the Planning Board in the information exchange portion of the Planning Board meeting, just to keep people apprised. I'm sorry.
Yeah. I was just gonna say, it feels similar to our role on the OAC. I mean, it's led by Doug as a staff member. And we're not voting on content that comes before OAC, but we are there just for information sharing and just to stay informed of those reviews.
Yeah, I don't see any real issue with it. I think being present for some of the discussions is helpful because you better understand the thought process behind a result. And where they're not, you know, televised or...
Yeah, I think it would be a much more involved conversation if, you know, you wanted to make that person a voting member of the committee.
Doesn't make any sense at all. Yeah, yep.
Probably some legal.
Yeah, exactly.
Questions, but I'm not trying to push.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's not my intent, so it doesn't matter.
Yep. So you guys will have to take up liaisons in your first meeting. That would be the time to bring this up. And you'd probably have to formally add that to your liaison list when you vote to approve the council liaisons.
Yeah, we would probably have to amend the committee policy that same night before we can make those appointments.
Yeah, I mean, what... Generally speaking, you're gonna have to approve your council rules regardless. We have something to work on. And then you have a couple outstanding items for committee policy, so you might want to just tack this onto that.
Although, would it go in that same... Would it go in that same committee policy if it's not a council committee?
The OAC, I think, is it still listed, but is it defined as a staff?
Still listed as a council committee?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think it's a council committee in the policy.
I mean, I don't think it would be too hard to add just the vertiginous.
Yeah. Probably maybe under even the affiliate section where we're talking about. Here are our committee... There are other committees that are not under council. And I think just making that list or identifying it there probably would make sense.
If I may just... I think it could probably work if the OAC had a different Town Council liaison, but it probably makes sense to have the Staff Review Committee and Planning Board the same person.
Yeah.
They're so parallel.
Yeah.
I agree.
Yeah, that makes perfect sense.
Yeah. It spreads the input and education around, which is a good thing. I mean, you could possibly even make a pitch for the fact that like where Planning Board has an alternate, which most of our committees don't have an alternate. You know, maybe the alternate could do the...
You mean alternate council liaison?
Yeah, could be the...
Seems like you've got another job already.
So, I mean, I don't have a... Those details, I guess, I'm not too fussy about. I just think that formalizing the presence is really, I guess, what I was after.
Yeah. Well, that sounds good. I don't have any problems with it. Anything else on that topic?
No.
Thank you, Doug. With that, we will end our workshop at 6:47 PM, and we will start up our official meeting at seven o'clock. Thank you.